Monday night, November 1st, 2021, 5:30 PM, City Council meeting. Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the minutes from October 18th. So move.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number two, any public concerns? Nope, okay. Number three is an ordinance. Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number 46, 2021, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds to the City of Bryan for the month ending November 30th, 2021. This is a transfer request of $500,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 general fund for general spending purposes.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number four is an ordinance. Lori, will you please number and read?
Order number 47, 2021, ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area, DORA, for downtown Bryan, enacting regulations for the DORA and declaring an emergency.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to... Maybe you can go talk to him. We have passed an ordinance last year that gave temporary DORA for one year that expires at the end of this year. So what council is looking at tonight is DORA that is actually the same as that for as before. We had some internal discussions about whether to extend those boundaries and we can continue those in the whole session if you would like, but there is a lot of resident issues that we would like to improve. And after speaking with the manager of the restaurant, they've got a schedule and it's time to do that. I will tell you that today, I received an email from Commissioner Hillker. I did reach out to the county commissioners last week to let them know DORA was on the agenda. And there is some concern from the county judges and they would prefer that DORA times be changed to 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM irrespective of course. You still have the option, of course, it's 11:00 A.M. for noon to 11:00 P.M., Monday through Saturday. You can discuss that or you can, if a council, you can offer to do a first reading on this from the 11:00 A.M. legislature. And then allow Mr. Leverin to get on their agenda again, like he did the last time, try to talk through that. Or you can pass it, you have options. Obviously, we want to work with the county commissioners and the county courthouse, but I will also remind you that we, to my knowledge, have had absolutely no issues with criminal activity, extra garbage, any of those things with this temporary DORA. I personally have not gotten any complaints from the constituents that maybe were nervous about it before. I don't know if you have, but I think that it's been pretty seamless experience, if you want to call it that, because I think that's what we were all doing for that first year. And quite frankly, with only 1,300 cups sold by the chamber as of last month, it's not being used enough, I think, to affect the courthouse. But you have some options on how to view that procedure.
What were the judges' concerns?
Well, I think that they just do not want people outside on the square drinking while they're in session. Because they both have windows in the outer line area, so if someone were out on the sidewalk having a beer and they had a trial and jury was watching, that is an assumption. That's just something I heard. I had not spoken to either judge personally about the DORA. I am again just relaying the email I got from Commissioner Hillker today.
I'd like to leave it as is. There hasn't been any problems.
I agree with that as well. Out of courtesy, should we have a conversation with them or?
I'm still trying to get that text out to people down at the court. I think out of courtesy, they have to work with us on the boundaries, but it's not amenable.
That's my concern.
I think out of courtesy, we should have a conversation with them.
Yeah.
But we also need to make sure that we get on their agenda soon. You guys, you got one more time.
I think that's at a minimum, because when we asked them for the discussion about the boundaries, I wasn't involved in that, but the outcome was a understanding that was amenable to all. So I think we ought to at least have a conversation with them.
And I think in that, if you, I mean, as councilor said, other than what we did last time, I think we were very successful in the conversation. And even if we accept the courtesy of the judges with their full comments to the commissioners before then, because if you feel that it's... I can only base it off an email, so I don't know how strong their feelings are, if those were their feelings before, if those are their feelings now. If you'd not want to speak on the other, how would these work with?
Yeah, I'm kind of of the attitude that if there hasn't been a problem, then, you know, let it both light fix it. But I would like to hear what they have to say.
I agree. I'd like to hear their reasons.
Yeah, obviously, I like to keep the hours the same.
Yeah.
You know, but let's...
Let's hear what they have to say about it and the concerns they have.
Yep, yep.
So I know I'm cutting it off on kind of surprise, but would you suggest that you do a first reading on this? Because that may be next week, Mr. Leverin, and I could get on their agenda. And then we would have an update for the next council meeting?
Yeah, considering that we only need to pass this before the end of the year. I would say you can still take your first reading and then if you want, if you wanted to do an amendment, you can still do that in the second or third reading.
And it also provides, you know, again, with this first reading, provides for community input. They would like to email council members. I would ask that many email council members who are having a little pathology, please hard copy mayor@cityofbryant.com in their emails. Make sure that I give that to them. Also, everyone is always welcome for public comments in the council meetings. If the newspapers can help us get that out, the public information, I would appreciate it.
I'll move that we pass the first reading of the DORA ordinance.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay, then, item number five is an ordinance. Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number 48, 2021, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one and final for the project known as 2021 pavement marketing program.
Okay, here presented with a change order. It's actually a decrease in cost. Typically, every year, this particular program is a decrease because whatever our paving program is, we've already strike with the paving program and it's just simpler to not change our bid spec. So it gives us a little flexibility. So with that, I would request you suspend the rules, authorize this change order. It's one and final, the only one we will have for a decrease of $11,721.70.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Item number six, building permit.
In your packet is a building permit for Starkweather Family LLC, DBA Big B Coffee. This is their building permit. They have state-approved plans for the building and it's kind of a mud hole down there now, so I'm not real sure. Don't ask when they're going to be open, because I don't know. So, but at least they have their plans done and in. And with that, I'm requesting you approve their building permit.
Well, I'm going to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brian, I do have to say that I've had, I had a phone call on this from a lady who was very upset over where it's going. She said that it's the worst place in the world and she was just very, very concerned about it. I tried to explain to her it was approved by an engineer and we may have a few problems, but...
It's been through planning commission. We discussed their planning commission. The entrance off Main Street is enter-only. They can't leave the site on Main Street. When they leave on South Street, it's actually right turn only. So is it going to be congested? Absolutely. Domino's was congested the first couple of months. Little Caesars was congested. You open up a new business, it's going to be congested, but the people learn and I think it'll be okay. The traffic counts, even if you think about it, it's a drive-up window. How long does it take to order your coffee and make your coffee? Probably a minute, guessing. Maybe two minutes at the most.
I tried to explain all that.
So if you have, even if it takes a minute, that's 60 cars an hour. So it's not 10,000 vehicles a day through there.
Yeah.
So is it going to be hectic? Yeah, it is, but I think we'll be all right by the time it's over.
She talked to me and she also talked to the mayor and she was not a happy camper.
Yep.
No, but I think I explained it too. I do think Big B made good faith effort to try to find a different place to put it and could not work out an agreement with the landowner.
Right.
And I think that as a community, I would hate to not support Big B because we're worried about traffic. Because every change in the community has brought some traffic headaches and we all have to readjust. So I certainly am excited that Big B is going to come to Bryan, Ohio. And I hope that, you know, after the first week or so, that she may join in getting a coffee or one of your favorite drinks there, because I think...
I'll be happy when we sell the North Industrial Park and have 500 jobs and 2,000 cars a day. It'd be great. I love traffic jams.
And he has to come back and beg me for road repairs.
And I'm not discounting her situation. I agree, there will be a traffic problem, but I think people will learn and it will move on.
Oh, I just wanted to voice, because she was, as I said, she was not happy and...
I've talked to a few people as well.
I tried to explain to her, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Item number seven, permission to post, Mayor?
Yes. First, I want to make sure you all know Assistant Chief Poole is filling in for Chief Siders tonight. I think you all know Doug. If you don't, he is here in the YD uniform. But with that, Chief Siders had announced his retirement plans for the end of the year. I am asking that council allow me permission to post that position within the city of Bryan.
So move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary? Yes.
All right, with that, we'll go around the room. I know you have something to say.
Okay. I think it was in July, I came to you guys and said, I need permission to apply for a grant, water and wastewater, or water and wastewater infrastructure program. I said, I don't know much about it, but welcome to my Monday, I've got a week to do this. We banged out four different grants that week. Now, mind you, this had to be a shovel-ready program. Plans had to be done and ready to roll. Fortunately, we had four projects between us and Bryan Municipal Utilities that we submitted. And I got a call from the governor's office last Monday. We were successful in receiving one of the projects. The city of Bryan is receiving $2.1 million to do a sanitary sewer project on the west side of Bryan. We're basically going to go from Avenue B area, west, south of High Street, north of Oakwood. We've been doing pipe bursting program in there, in the southwest part of town, for the last 10 years. Usually, I'm pretty successful with Ohio Public Works in getting a $400,000 or $500,000 job. But we were successful in $2.1 million, zero cost out of pocket, unless it runs over the $2.1 million grant. But I'll pay 10 cents on the dollar, I don't care. But this is great. We're going to replace over 8,000 feet of sewer. I don't have specifics on when, but I believe it's going to be as soon as possible because the state said you'll be receiving an email in a week or two on when to do this and how to do it. But I don't know if you saw on the news last week, Fayette received $10 million to replace all their water lines in town. They've got leaky water lines. They actually leak more water than they consume during the day. So they were successful as well. There was 57 projects in the state that they chose right now for round one. And we were the only one in Williams County. And I'm happy to say that we received $2.1 million. So I just wanted to publicly announce that to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Well done.
If I could work on commission, I'd love it. Just throwing that out there.
Time to sit down.
All right.
It, no. I have a question.
Oh, never mind.
Pete, so Pete. I was trying to be diplomatic and then it's just not going to work, so I'll be a regular Bets and just give it to you. Certainly appreciate the grant, great idea, totally support. I'm just, just so I have an understanding, this is to replace sewers that are old and leaking?
The, yes.
Give me a 30 second.
In 1977, '78, we did a sewer separation in town.
Yes.
And we replaced a lot of sewers that were done in the 20s, 30s, 40s with PVC pipe. The western part of town had vitrified clay sewer, but they were bell and spigot.
Okay.
So it still had the sleeve, it wasn't butt joint clay pipe.
Yep, yep.
So this is still bell and spigot, vitrified clay pipe.
Okay.
We do have, eight, nine years ago, we put in a storage pond at the wastewater plant to help take stormwater infiltration that gets into the sanitary sewer. We treat it, save it. We've been trying to reduce infiltration. We did a program several years ago to remove sump pumps from basements. But the southwestern part of town historically has high amounts of stormwater infiltration into the sanitary sewer.
Okay.
So that's why we've been trying to get 1,000 feet a year or whatnot, trying to tackle what we can. But again, we'll get 8,000 feet and we will replace old aging clay sewer
Perfect.
that potentially has infiltration.
No, absolutely. Thank you, that answered my question, perfect.
So commission is still...
No, it's still on the table.
All right, I just wanted to ask.
Good luck with that.
Anyone else from the city? Papers? John?
Yeah, I just want to say two things quick. One, if you have not already, please get out and exercise what I consider to be a sacred right to vote if you have not already voted. There are important issues for Bryan and Williams County. I believe they are the library and the school and there was, and mental health, I believe. But, and I certainly don't mean to leave anybody out, but there are important issues that are very substantial to the city of Bryan and to Williams County. So I really would like to encourage everyone to please exercise their right to vote. It does make a difference. And I am, I do this every year. I'm very passionate about the concept of voting and for whomever you want on the individual ticket, but also for the issues. I also would like to state, I put it in the statement to the Bryan Times and it didn't make it, and that's fine. I don't edit what they say, but I will make a very public statement that I'm very disappointed I am not being challenged. In my opinion, the city of Bryan is better when we have people who are willing to step up and run and give people a choice. And I'm not speaking for anyone else but me. I have absolutely no problem with people wanting to run for city council or BPA or Board of Education or whatever the case may be. It's very saddening to me that there appears to be one of two things. People are totally satisfied with me, everyone, 100%, or there's apathy. You decide which you think that is. I will say that I've never had 100% popularity vote in my life and don't expect to and really don't care to anyway. The second thing is I want to thank Starkweather. I want to thank Starkweather for their investment in Bryan. I feel as though that's always a good thing to see business development in Bryan and I'm very happy with that. And I will now add a third. Thanks to Bryan, his staff, the BPA and everyone else who put together grant money that helps the city of Bryan out. It's very much appreciated and thank you very much. That's it.
Judy?
I also want to say thanks to Bryan and all of them that were involved in that. I also want to say thanks to the park department for the Halloween party that was put on over the weekend. I walked past there Saturday morning and it looked like it was going to be a road party going on. And also, I agree with John, please get out and vote if you haven't already done so. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
I just want to again thank Bryan for his effort in getting the money for the city. It's fabulous. And I just had one word on my paper here, it says vote. So please get out and vote.
Thank you, Rick. Jim?
I'd also like to thank Bryan and your efforts for getting out and vote. And on Sunday, 7th, right?
Six thirty in the morning.
At 6:30 in the morning, we were having the Christmas blitz up on the square to put all the Christmas decorations up. So if you're available, it takes an hour, two hours, three hours, but it's a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda?
Good job, Brian. Lori?
Congratulations, Mr. Weaver. Very good at the pen and sharpening all of those with grants. Parks Department, Cindy, huge shout-out to all the work that you did. I know you had to be very flexible with the weather that you had. Thank you. Also, police and fire, thank you for being there and helping pass things out and being present for the kids. I think it's always good community service when they get to see you. So, great job, everyone.
I'm going to add to what everyone else said, but then also add to what Jim said. 6:30 in the morning on Sunday, help us decorate the square, because it's always beautiful. Everyone appreciates it. The more hands we have, the quicker we can get done. So please come and help us out. With that, council is going to go into executive session in the conference room to consider appointment of employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee.
We're going to actually ask all of you to stay in here, if you don't mind. And we're going to go into the council conference room and we will be back out. So if you guys could all stay. Okay.
I have never had to text him so many times in a meeting. That one, I can't see the light on. Can you see it? It's on the side. It's green. Okay, we are good.
Go ahead, Mary. Do we have to go back into regular? Do we have to? But, we didn't have to.
Well, we did. We motioned into regular session.
Okay.
Okay, council, I'd like to address you regarding Chief Chris Chappa. While no criminal charges are going to be filed and no unlawful hostile work environment was found in our internal investigation, I do feel that the overall morale of the department and the underlying incident that happened on June 21st are outside of what management in the city of Brian should behave like. With that, I have reached out to Chief Chappa and he has agreed, and I am asking you to vote on whether you agree or not, that he will be transferred from his position of chief of police to patrolman effective November 8th. He will be on a 12-month probationary period and unable to enter the union until November 8th, 2022. And he will not be eligible to apply for any positions within the police department in a supervisory capacity. This is something that he has This is something that he has agreed to in writing. Um, I think that it shows good faith to the police officers in Brian PD and also, um, to a officer chief that has given 20 years to Brian PD that, um, he has made his mistakes. I think a demotion of this magnitude certainly recognizes those mistakes and I feel like it is, um, the proper outcome, in my opinion.
I move to accept the recommendation.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and with that, um, I truly hope that the department, the city, the community can move forward together in working on trust. Um, I know that the department is ready to get back to and has been working through this, um, and they certainly do not deserve the black cloud that has surrounded them. So I hope we can all continue to work together. Um, I would ask, um, that council, um, vote to appoint Greg Ruski, Gregory Ruski, to serve as interim police chief. I think that he has done an outstanding job and, um, has completely risen to an occasion in a situation that he certainly did not see coming his way, and I'm very grateful to his leadership during that time.
So good.
I'll second.
Bradley?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, council is going to take a short recess and we are going to go into a discussion to discuss acquisition of property.
Yes.